Colored meeting of the Washington County Council of the Board, we present with the intention and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's just something really completely here, we've got about two minutes, if anyone had an opportunity to look at your agenda and the minutes, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, if you have, the chairman received a motion that we approved for an agenda.
Are we starting with the here, from the here first, to the right of the meeting?
We've got to go to five to five, we don't want to change these until later. I'll make that motion. We have a motion that we adopt, do you consider agendas or second to that motion? Sir, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Any votes for it?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Bird?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
She is. We will not try to approach another one. I'm behind that clock, so we'll go by that one. Would you have to do that, how long? Yes, sir. Okay, we will recess the town council meeting in this time, and we're going to open a public hearing, and this is for the budget for 2024 and '25. We've had budget hearings, we've opened a budget workshop before, we've had a budget workshop, and tonight we have prepared, this is the balanced budget, this is on the official data, and we have a balanced budget, and it looks like the budget that we live here with has been held up for a short amount of time, and our minds are still the same, and we need to have a hearing tonight, discuss it on ourselves, and then we'll discuss the budget, and then we will close this, and we vote on the budget, the final vote on the budget will be the... Okay, the public hearing is now open, is there any discussion from anyone on the council concerning the budget that you have in your hands, either by department or by line item, or as a whole or as to the council status? Does any one of you have a quick deal, do you remember our budget compared to last year's budget, bottom line and squaw, upper now? I know some of our revenues.
This is the 2023, this is the 2024.
Okay, we're up just, we're up a couple hundred thousand, shit, about five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars, but that's going to be our grants, isn't it?
Yes.
So, if there's a question about the difference between our budget last year and our budget this year, it is obligated funds, it's not funds that we have to, that we can spend for, for budget items. Any discussion? Anyone in the audience like to address the budget? Okay, briefly, our budget memo says 23, 24, should be 24, 25, so it's balanced at $4,854,717. There are no raises for employees, figured in the budget, the dividend contribution at $16 per hour, with an hour, $1 an hour raise, effective on January 25, and $17 per hour, that should say, the maintenance person, at $17 per hour, $1 an hour raise also in January. Florida League of Insurance, $40,000 per year, the property insurance has been reduced by $20,000 by reducing coverage. Recompense house, for $1,384,090, or other square, $600,000, those amounts probably equal the amount of our grants, or we had insured the bill for those, those book of under grants. The order is currently $14,000, a new contract has been signed for budget purposes estimate as far, at $15,000, for employees, it's 13.63 matched to the town for regular employees, there are matched 58, 68 for elected officials. State budgets are down in all categories, utilities are up, and an increase for street lights isn't expected. This budget property insurance was divided among the general fund, $15,000, water fund, $15,000, and the fire fund, $11,500. Any questions or comments on the budget memo, if there's one, have one of you, you may ask. Any discussion on the minute? Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Carter, I think we just adjourn this meeting and come back, we don't vote, even, we'll be back in session, do we? Okay, all right, no questions on the budget, the budget meeting, the budget hearing was then adjourned, and we will reopen our ready, our real city council meeting, our regular, that's the word, regular city council meeting. Sometimes the right words are just chasing it down and getting it out. All right, all right, Mr. Jonathan Barnett?
Jonathan resigned this week as head of the EDC, and so they do not currently have an EDC executive director.
So, but the chamber director and the EDC director resigned within the last month?
Yep.
Wow.
Economic Development Council?
Yeah, we were part of that because chiefly had been the sole, the sole members for the most part, some representatives from industry and business and things like that. And a couple of years ago, Mr. Massey said, this is not, this is not good, this is not likely to board a review with him, so they have sponsored a seat at the EDC for Wausau, Terryville, Ebro, and Vernon. And Ms. Gothard, I was the, well, to begin with, I think, I think it's from back to Mrs. Palmer, she may have attended a few of those meetings, we were just kind of guests, but now we're members. I did it for about a year, and then actually we had to make our transition, last year Margaret went some, and then Ms. Gothard has been our representative. The EDC is kind of the, kind of the naest that the aid was laid in for our dollar journey struggle, and its, its purpose is to help develop economic opportunities in Washington County, and now in these four cities that they have given us the state, and so we ought to be able to kind of, when we got a lead or something, they'll maybe get some aid off. If I said that all about what you're planning to be?
Yep.
So, okay, if Mr. Barnett's not going to be here then, anyone in the non-agenda audience, I see one signature. Mr. Cole, come on.
Good evening, Greg Cole, our chief at Greenhead, also the best commander for the recent firefighter competition we had two weeks ago. I'm here to do two things, provide an update on how the competition went two weeks ago, and then request permission to use the Possum Palace again September of 2025. So, a couple of months ago, when you gave us permission to use the Possum Palace, the one stipulation you had was we had to report back to you the amount of water that we used, and thankfully our Ebro Fire Department was able to provide a meter for the hydrant, and took a start photo, a beginning photo, and we used 4,567 gallons, which we've already reported to Lynn Gothard. And so, really what that averaged out to is, we began with approximately 2,000 gallons just in our dump tank, and that was approximately 500 gallons per team after that. We had four events, five were scheduled, one of them kind of fell through. Four events, four teams, three teams from Washington County, one team from Bay County, Wausau was there, Greenhead, and Ebro had teams, and then it was from Bay County, it was kind of from a group of Sand Hills, Mexico Beach, and so three people per team. The weather cooperated, weather couldn't have been much better, the rain held off, kept the temperatures down. By my accounts, we had approximately four vendors show up, Wausau Fire Department was selling food, which at least, you know, having a group of 100-plus people, you know, it was kind of important to make sure, you know, had some kind of food for those folks. Other vendors included the graduating class from Vernon High School, they were there, ROTC from Vernon High School provided the color guard for the opening ceremony, and they assisted with parking, and had other vendors selling croissled goods and honey. There might be one other that I'm overlooking, I apologize for that. We even had, of the four firefighter events, we even had, what was it, Joe, three, four events for the children?
Three.
Three events for the kids that were almost a mirror image of what firefighters were doing, they were spraying water and at a bucket on a cable, and they were hauling water from a container over to buckets, and what was the?
They had a sled, a tanker?
Okay, yeah. One of the local firefighters on Sunny Hills had made a miniature, what we call Kaiser sled, and so that was the grown-up event that fell through, but the kids had an actual miniature Kaiser sled, and it looked like, by all accounts, the kids were enjoying it, the families were enjoying it, and in fact, from all accounts, the first competition went very well. There are a couple of areas we can improve, especially on advertising, inviting vendors, inviting teams. Hopefully next year we'll do five teams, or five events, hopefully we'll get that Kaiser sled, if we, if nothing else, build it ourself, and then want to limit the teams. It sounded like we're going to have more teams next year, so after a few departments saw how well it went, how much fun it was, it was so much fun for everybody, both the competitors as well as the spectators, it was such a fun thing. So, looking to cap it at eight teams next year, which will help with the scoring brackets, and so that'll probably increase our water usage by probably about 2,000 gallons next year, so, you know, 6,000, 7,500 gallons of water next year. We're looking to do next year on Saturday, September 6th, which is the Saturday before November 11th, and again, we pick that Saturday before November 11th to...
September 11th.
Yeah, well, our date is September 6th, is the date we want to do the event, we're tying that in with September 11th, the 9/11 attacks, and so we do a little remember-it ceremony there as part of our opening ceremony. Subject to your questions, just seeking approval for next year's event on September 6th, Saturday the 6th.
About how many spectators turned out?
I heard someone had counted, approximately 100 observers were there, you know, a lot of families for the firefighters were there, you know, some of the vendors had brought extra folks, but a little over 100 is, is an estimate from what I had heard.
It's good to be the first time?
Yes, ma'am. And so that was the thing, being first time, we're just not sure how it was going to turn out, and so just did it on a wing and a prayer, and thankfully so many things just went well, and even a lot of my plans fell apart, but in a good way. And instead of doing round robin on the events, everybody just kind of, we started with one event, and all of us stayed there together and cheered on each other, and, you know, the competitors kind of back and forth with each other, and then we moved to the next event. And so there, even for me as the coordinator, it was things I learned on how we could do it, you know, start off with the dry events, so the firefighters wait until, you know, further on in the day before they start getting into the wet events.
Anybody else have a question?
Oh, yeah, Greg, can you remind us who was the overall winner on that one?
Yeah, I forgot, I forgot to write that on my notes.
I was going to ask if somebody else did.
All right, so, four events, and we had first-place trophies for each of the events. Greenhead got a first-place trophy, and Ebro got a first-place trophy, and Wausau, Wausau got two first-place trophies. And then based on that, Greenhead ended up with third place overall, Ebro ended up in second place, and Wausau brought home the, the big nice trophy, first place overall. And the trophies turned, the first-place trophies turned out to be some little miniature stuff I found in my closet at where I work, and I converted them into Fire Department trophies instead of ROTC trophies, but the overall trophies was refurbished fire extinguisher and a cylinder from an old air pack, and had put a little, you know, trophy topper on it, and slapped a plaque on it, and I hope everybody's being honest when they say they really enjoyed the top three trophies, because in my opinion, you know, of course, you know, beauty is the knighth of behavior, they were some pretty good-looking trophies for, you know, on a really tight budget.
I'm sure they were, and sounds appropriate.
And so next year we're going to make sure, try to get somebody besides Wausau to bring home the overall trophy.
Anybody else have a question from, from Scott? I appreciate the report and things like that, and I wanted to ask about the winner. What about your competition, feel like, I think you said that this time next year we would maybe double the number of people? I guess we probably all sing these on the six o'clock news, they run little, thanks a lot, where the bigger places are having, they do extensive kinds of thing, rescue and booking troops and climate laws and stuff like that, but I think just the effort to bring the departments together and cooperative anything is a good, a good thing.
Yes, sir. It was good for training, it was good for community, it's going to be good for recruiting both near term and long term with, with the kids growing up, so it helped some of the local businesses, you know, earn some extra money, so there was a lot of good things that came out of it.
Anything else for us?
No, sir.
Okay, September 6th, that's just simply calendar, we don't have to vote on that, I think. You want us to furnish the water again, we'd probably have to vote on that, in case the holder asked about it. And we won't know how much water that is until it's, until it's already done, but...
Estimating 7, 7,500 gallons next time?
Six thousand gallons, if we, we're heading up to about 7,500, if we don't use 7,500, we would, we would live up to that, we'd get a motion to that event.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion that the, the Fire Department being able to use our facilities and to provide up to 7,500 gallons for the event on September 6th, 2025, so second that motion? Second. Motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Ava, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Bird?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
And Chair, she is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Now, if you will, I'll stand still just a minute. Is, is our chief here at our invitation, okay, can, we don't have him, can we take him here in case he needs to leave? Sure. And Mr. Cole, as a visiting chief, would you just sit and listen, and maybe between the two of you, if things we say here that you could use someplace, there's shelter taken back, is that, is that acceptable for everybody? Okay, can you stay a few minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Come on, Ryan.
Yes, sir.
How are you doing tonight?
Exhausted, honestly, but I made it.
You made it, yeah. How about, how about just giving us a quick overview, you've been chief now six months, am I right?
About, it'd be close to that.
Simple, first of this year sometime. Give us, give us an idea of what you are seeing and experiencing with the, with the Wausau Fire Department?
Things are going fairly well. There's not many issues I've seen. There's been a little bit of confusion on some of the financials, which we're trying to get worked through and figure out what's going on, but as far as...
I think to hit you out a little bit, that's, that's why you're here, you're here at our invitation to, to talk about those things, and it's what I'm trying to see if we can hit you, figure them out, work them out, okay? So, go ahead with what you, what you're seeing there, what you think it calls them, or...
Trying to figure out where, okay, there's been some confusion with switching town clerks and all, on renting out, like the dunking booth being rented out and all, and where the money was going, whether it was going into the fundraiser account or going into the general account, and questions on basically what's being spent or where.
Okay, what is the question, Lynn?
And that's the problem, and a lot of it, I'm putting on me, because I haven't made it up here, I've been extremely busy and catching, I don't want to catch Ms. Lynn when she's off work, that's not fair to her, for working after hours, but I need to, I was wanting to get, wanting to get copies of where our money has been spent and what's coming in, so, with both of us, so she knows what's going on, I know what's going on. I know we did our fundraiser at that event, and don't want to know where it slipped through the cracks, but we never got any starter money like we normally do, so we come up with our, our own. I did finally get the total on that, what we had brought in, which we have not turned that back in yet, because we have another one coming right up, and we were just holding on to it, so we had startup money for the next one. But, other than that...
Okay. Lynn has shared some of y'all's conversation with me, I haven't with any of the rest of the council, not to keep it from them, but so that you could dress tonight, we wouldn't violate the sunshine, so that's, that's kind of, if that gives me an advantage, I will, I will not apply it, I will, I want everybody here to talk, to be able to ask your question.
No, I don't want anything done that's not supposed to be done, for sure, definitely, I mean, I definitely don't want to bend to break the rules, I want it done right.
The best way not to have a misunderstanding is to have an understanding.
Yes.
That's what we want to do tonight. Did anyone on the council know that they were going to do a fundraiser on the, the day of this meeting?
It was mentioned, wasn't it?
It was mentioned, because even when he talked about it, he discussed it, we would be doing food that day.
Did he?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think we might be, but that, that's not a big, I'm just saying that we didn't know, so, so we couldn't get you anywhere.
Right.
It was not our fault.
There was miscommunication, because even in the department, a lot of them thought we decided not to do it, and it's like, no, we had decided to, and there was confusion on our side too, it was, it was not, I, by no means am I saying, oh, she wouldn't give us money, we ask, she does, I mean, she tries her best.
As far as where your money is spent, do you keep any records in?
Yes.
So, so there's no reason you shouldn't know where the money was spent?
Okay, correct. Now, yes, I'm confused a little bit, but I'm sorry, it's been a really bad week. As far as money that we spent, yes, we know what, what we've spent, but as far as like, what is spent on electric, this, I have no idea, honestly, I really don't. And as far as like, she did give me a sheet a few months ago, I don't know exactly right off the top of my head, that how much was in fundraiser money, but, and maybe I misunderstood, but my understanding is all of a sudden our fundraiser money is empty, but it shouldn't be. And I, it could be a misunderstanding on my part, I really don't know.
Don't miss out.
Please.
Well, basically the way it works for me, I don't know anything about Margaret, since I've been here, Dion calls me and says, we're going to have a fundraiser next week, and we need $200 startup money.
Right.
Okay, I write a check, I go to the bank, I cash it, I give, when they cash it, they give me a slip, I get Dion to sign it, and I sign it, and I hand him 200 cash, that's the way it works, that way I have a signature, I go to the bank, he has a signature, he got it from me, so he takes that, when he comes back, after you have the fundraiser, he comes back, he hands me the money that y'all raised, I count it in front of him, that we come up here, we separate it out, twenties, fives, tens, I count it, he signs it, I sign it, saying, this is what I gave you, this is what I said, and then I write him a receipt, and then I go take it to the bank, the bank receipt is matched up, so all three of them receipts are right there, that way from beginning to end, we know where the money was and where came, the last two or three fundraisers y'all had, there was no money, you went in the hole. I know the one, and so, the problem is that, and plus the $100 a month now that you're paying the cleaning lady, the money's going out pretty fast, because I know for Fun Day, I don't know the exact amount, it was...
Fun Day, yeah, Fun Day was very, very bad for us.
It was bad.
Yeah, Fun Day did not turn out well at all for us.
And then y'all had the, the one fundraiser where you bought the stuff upfront, but you gave the other fire, fireman, the guy that his house burnt, yeah, so usually to do those fundraisers, around $600 or $700 is what y'all were spending, none of that, what should have happened, that you should have took what you, money you spent for your supplies out and gave him the rest.
Yes.
Y'all gave it all to him.
We did.
So, with that one, you were in a deficit.
Yeah, that one I knew it would be...
And so, as you're doing these, the money's going down, 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 it's not broke, there's around $1,100, I think, in there.
See, that's my misunderstanding, when they told me it was, they're like, there's only like $100 or $200, I'm like, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, wait a minute, something's not right, it wasn't matching up.
You know, one person from the Fire Department has ever called me on that phone or come up here to see me about the money, it's all rumor, it's all gossip.
Exactly, and I've been wanting to get up here with you, but like I said, I don't want to bother you on your time off, that's not fair to you.
I'd rather do that than all the gossip that's going on, personally. But the way it, the way it has to work for auditing purposes is that all these receipts need to be together, we need to see where I paid you the startup, we need to see where you brought the money back to the town hall, we need to put it all together, so when you're holding money like y'all did from the fire games, there's no accountability, there's nothing in our books that says, this is what you took, this is what you got back. And so, you know, for auditing purposes, the money should, I mean, and I like it clean, I like it very clean, I want the receipts.
I know, and I totally, yeah, I totally get that.
And all that, so...
As far as the one that you just addressed, we got up to money, maybe, maybe the guys took that out of their pockets, $20 apiece, et cetera, just making change, as far as, as far as we know officially, that never took place, y'all could take that same money, divide it and put it back here, if you didn't come here to get money to start with, and bring money back here, we don't have any knowledge of that, and it doesn't exist, there was nothing there that we can be, can audit, in the older version.
Okay.
And I'm usually right, like fundraiser for Fun Day, fundraiser for, I mean, I know y'all got a street fest coming up.
Yes, and that's what we had saved that part for, just to be for our startup money for that, which is still not enough, but...
It needs, it needs to come into the town conference so that we have the bank statements, because I have, you know, we're turning over bank statements to the auditors, so all the money that goes out and all the money that comes in needs to be in these bank statements, so that protects you, and it protects me.
Anybody else have a question? You talk about, we're talking about the six months, I know that, what we should or could have done, probably someone from the council, and perhaps even myself, I should have sat with you when you came on board, but you've been a part of the Fire Department for a while, and, and I think we assume that, we actually have the recommendation of the people who be the chief on that, there is a, a fire chief's job description adopted by ordinance of the town, I don't know if you've got a copy of that or, or familiar with that, it's pretty lengthy and detailed, but... But we're always trying to let old and unpleasant things die and not dig about them. But knowing some of the history in, in now not so recent years, but in not so distant years either. We're trying to make sure that none of that ever happens again. Our committees don't need to be divided and especially people who are supposed to be on the same team don't need to be divided. Now, Mr. Hurdle, please, by, by invitation, jump in. Where did I make a mistake? Because it's going to be assumed that I'm speaking for the council and as only council also.
Yes, sir.
Correct me. So please jump in through. The, the, the city council is responsible for all of the services and the departments, etc., that operates on behalf of the, of the town. Uh, the fire department doesn't have a, a, a fire building. The town does. You don't have a fire truck. The town does. You are our managers, our operators, our users, you're our manpower or personnel power, however the politically correct term may be. You're, you're the people that we depend on and trust and want you to be the people that, that does all that stuff. But everything that's done has opportunity to reflect on the council. And sometimes people will take it to the point that it will reflect on us personally and negatively. Uh, that bunch of crooks or that, uh, mayor is a crook or, you know, and that, that hasn't been said.
I was gonna say, uh, we'll have words because, um, I know I ain't never said nothing like that.
That's been said, but until we, until we kind of stop the rumor mill, that's the work opportunity presents itself. We know how everybody talks about our president or our governor or our congressman or, you know, our other.
Honestly, I haven't heard good things lately, so I mean.
Keep that same attitude and spirit from reflecting on this council. Uh, so, so just like for instance, the money, that shouldn't come back immediately. If you got it back out in two days, it should have been this event, it started, it happened, it stopped, bottom line.
I would take all the blame on that. I know I had issues that, I shouldn't say issues. We had the same stuff happen when I was chief of Vernon and with them, it was not an issue for us to hold that small amount. Uh, now it is my fault that I did not get her a number of what we had. That is my, I, I take full responsibility. I should have gotten that right away to you.
Um, I think, I, I think it's just clearer, more precise and, and it's more comfortable. I, I can't speak for Vernon's council or any other council. But I'd rather not have money at any events over with as quickly as possible. It may not be the next day, but within a.
Yeah.
Uh, county manager bring it in, we'll do the receipt and if you need it for the next weekend, we'll cash you another share or give you the money back.
Okay.
Whatever. But I'd rather us not do that. Uh, just to, just to speak by reference and not get into, again, reaching of, uh, uh, wow. You want to jump in now? Once upon, once upon a time, once upon a time, there was, there was money management.
Improprieties.
Sure, improprieties.
Yeah.
Phones and, etc. And that, that don't get us to work. I need to take, I can't, I don't know how to do it. But, but we don't, we don't, I don't, everyone wants to do that again and, and.
And we don't want it to look like that's even happening.
This council doesn't want that to happen again. And, uh, this attorney doesn't want that to happen again. And so, so, uh, that, that's all we want to do. And if you don't, if you don't know what we expect out of you, uh, I would, and we can't do it off the cuff now, but for preparation things, uh, how do we do this? What's the council appear? Because all, all those fundraising monies, uh, by vote of the council, really that when that money comes in and belongs to the city, but by recognizing who raised it, things like that, when we said, you can raise, you can do fundraisers and you can use that money for things, we can't give you out of the general fund. We've kind of made that an obligated fund. But, but when the audit takes place, you're not audit. We are.
Okay.
Because that money goes through our moves. It has to. And we can't, it does, and we can't have findings. That's.
Yeah, it's, I, I definitely wouldn't want any negative findings.
So.
There's always going to be a finding, but we hope it's a positive finding, not a negative.
Now, the fire department and the, and the private, uh, entity, the development group are two of the most positive things we have and want some. And I want this council to be supporters of both of them. I want both of them to be supporters of this council. And then I want both of them to be supporters of each other. And, uh, we can get by so much better if we're not just trying to outfigure how smart or anything.
I, I, I.
I'm not calling these.
Yeah, I'm definitely not going to be able to outsmart anyone around here, but.
I speak right out of the camera now, I hope not everyone.
Yeah.
Just, uh, uh, just, uh, we're walking on out. I want to, we would lost some of our flavor.
We're getting it back. Um, we've actually got, um, one of my firefighters is actually from out of county. Actually, out of county. He sees the way we do things here and he's joined us. He's more sport than anything else because he's so far away, can't respond, but he's always there for anything, fundraisers, anything we do.
Now, the, I think I remember the incident, the one where we gave, the firefighter who, who had. Do we not have to vote on that or did, and did we not vote on that to start with? We did not. We probably should have. Uh, and we understand, we understand the heart. We understand the sentiment. But again, that money was not sure is to give to the, to the firefighters. Uh, as such, you need to say, we're going to do this and this and how much we're going to give. We need to give the whole thing. But it needed to come here, so, so this.
And, and that, that would definitely be on me.
But we're not looking for a blank.
In the, in the, and, and, and I do have, and I need to bring my copy of what is the chief's responsibilities and all. I do have a copy and it doesn't mention anything about that, one way or the other. Um, I need to see if you've got one that's more detailed that I should be following.
Yeah, that wouldn't be your job description. That wouldn't be in your job description. That, that's what I'm talking about. Did you have it? It's your job description.
Okay, then I may not have that.
Okay.
Which I, I do need to get a copy of that so I know that I'm following what I'm supposed to be doing.
Okay. Yeah, because that's not something that's written. That's something that's like.
That's just, it's elemental, you know, to the, for the council's obligation to follow budget and money and the audit trail. And was this, I'm, I'm sorry, I just wasn't aware. Was this a benefit donation or somebody that had all, should you say their house burned down?
Yeah, one of the.
What that was, is we held a firefighter benefit for a firefighter that had lost his home. This firefighter has personally been over in every department. He has gone to any fire department and helped them anytime they can. And he lost his home. So we did a benefit strictly for him. And originally we were, because we bought the meat and all for it. And the whole department got together and said, you know what? We don't even want the money for the meat back. We're going to give him everything we raised. And the whole department voted on it and everybody, it was unanimous. Yes, we want to give him everything.
And that's great. That's totally fine. Again, it just has to be documented and handed the right way and subject to a vote of council because it is.
And now that was my misunderstanding because in the city of Vernon, the general fund is council controlled totally. The fundraiser fund is not council controlled. Now, they oversee it to make sure there's no improprieties that somebody went out and bought just whatever for, you know, a four wheeler or something, you know, it's, we had to show what it was spent on to make sure everything was within legal things to buy. But they didn't decide what happened with the fundraiser fund. So if, just as a wild example.
We can, we can, we can't determine what Vernon does.
Yeah, I know. And that's unfortunate. I'm just wrong with what I've always been taught. And then when I was in the other department, it was the same thing. Fundraiser fund was to buy stuff that we need, but we didn't get approval from, is basically what it is.
Just, just so you, just so you don't misunderstand, we're not, I don't think, if I made any of you believe that I thought that. We're not trying to control that. We buy actions. We already set it up over here. And all we want you to do is because we do have to be our necessary, all the things. Come in and say, if we can buy yoga. You know, we're not, we're not, we're not trying to tell you if you can or you can't.
Okay.
We just have to track the money.
Right.
And, and, and account for it.
Okay, like for the benefit, I didn't realize that you guys needed to approve us. That you guys needed to approve us giving everything, including what our startup was.
I think it's about a respect for anything. The council needs to know what's going on in the town.
And, and like I said, up until that time, originally, we were going to take everything we purchased back and, and turn it back into our fundraiser money. And then that day, in the middle of the day, while we were doing all this, one of the firefighters brought it up. Hey, instead of us taking our money back out for the meat and all, he's, you know, he's in a bind. He lost his whole house. He lost everything.
We're saying.
And it was a, you know, it was definitely not a planned thing. It's middle of the day, in the middle of cooking and all. They said, we wanted to make sure we could give as much as possible, so.
And you know, a good way to track that would have been to bring all that money to the camp, to the town, let me write him a check out of the, your fundraiser money. And then when you look at your bank statements, if you come to anybody, anybody under public records can look at your bank statements. And say, oh, there's where they had that fundraiser. Here's where she deposited it. Here's where they wrote the check back out to him.
Okay.
It's just.
And.
Yeah, it's just plain. Auto purpose, that chick, that chick is, has, has to be a backup dog in case you can hang out. Let me call time out again. Uh, anybody else in the council, I, I don't, this is to be a, just a two-way, three-way conversation here. Anybody, uh, we, we, I was in the council to hear everything and I was hoping to participate. If you have questions, I promise that I, that I didn't. Okay, let me ask, let me ask the quarter then. I understand what, I understand what you're asking for, chief. I think I do. If I don't, you, you put in a hell of a.
Okay.
Uh, can you, can you grab something or Mr. Carter maybe? Uh, a sheet that tells you what you need to do.
And, and I do apologize. I am going along with past experience.
Like the stuff you said, while.
That you and Dion did.
Can you put it, can you put it in writing?
Yeah.
Bring it to us to approach.
Sure. I don't want to mess up. I, I apologize. I'm going with.
We're going to help.
Yeah, I'm just going with past experience and what I've had.
We're going to help you. We're going to write you down.
And I realize each area is a little different and I want to make sure I'm doing it the way you need me to.
Yeah, and you're, I, I think that's a good term. We're going to head you and, uh.
Definitely.
But if it's all right with the council, what I'm going to ask is that Lynn and/or Mr. Carter develop a guideline.
Okay.
And bring it back to us to adopt. Right now, you know what to do, just for, you know.
Yeah.
If something happens between now and, and whatever next month is October, uh, you know how to handle it. But if you bring us something back, we'll, we'll prove that. Is that good, good of you or?
Good.
Mr. Carter, Mr. Carter.
Yeah.
And, and then you'll have something that, that you do that. Now, the other thing that you give us with. A good chief, a good foreman, a good leader knows his people. So you know who it is over there that's doing the unnecessary talking and things like that. You can intervene and help bring that to a halt. I believe you can stop it. You can sort of be slow to act. Do you, do you believe that? You believe you can try it?
I can do my best. I, I'm not going to, I can do what I can.
Um, that's all anyway.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not a miracle worker by no means, but I, I could do what I can.
I understand. And sometimes when you've got that kind of stuff going on, the thing that they're going to do is check their membership and see if they still eligible or if it's time they was doing something else. Now, that'd be a clue before I get open one, that'd be a clue. That'd be all over town. Before I disagree, Steve.
You know, walks up so well.
So, uh, maybe, maybe it's time that we started looking at the roster a little bit.
Only thing is that, uh, from what I read on the last SOGs we have, they're a lot more lenient than they used to be. If they weren't, honestly, we'd have two firefighters left on the department and that's it.
Maybe we need to readdress them. We don't need to get down to two.
I'm just saying, if we went to the old ones, there'd only be two left.
As a, as a provider of public service.
Yeah, two.
As a provider of public service. And we're responsible for the citizens of Warsaw. If I happen, two feet outside the city limits, we don't have any, any, or any other department to, things like that. And here, here's the thing, uh, we either need a fire department or we don't. And if we do, we need it to be the very best it even been. And we need its reputation. And, uh, you know, somebody say, somebody say, you know, can I use you for an example?
Sure.
Somebody say, you know, John Wolfman? Yeah, I think he's one of the finest men of Warsaw. I do too. You talk to somebody and say, you know, John Wolfman? He's a rascal. I do too. You got some people that agrees with the last person they talked to and their, their position, whatever the last person they talked to or the next person they talked to. He's either a good guy or he isn't. And, and, and when we hear somebody, we know that he's a good guy. So when somebody begins to tell me what a rascal he is, I'm not going to say, I thought that all the time. I'm going to say, I think you got it wrong. He was a nice man. We got him down. So we've got, we've got to pick up each other. And, and each entity, not just personally, I don't know that any of us have been talking about it. It hasn't gone back to us maybe, if we have. But there's no place for that to happen. And between the entities, there's no place for it to be, he's outside the street, this side of the street. And I, I don't, I think I'll repeat myself about going to keep them coming out.
Let me say one thing about the, the Dunkin' Booth rental. When I started and the council addresses last month, I was told that the churches in the area pay for nothing. And so, so I dressed up the council last month and we talked about rent, building rentals. And so I didn't charge the churches for the Dunkin' Booth. And after the, after, after I was told to start charging, I did. And I've had two churches that have said to me, we've never paid. And I'm like, I'm just telling you that the fire department wanted you to be paid, wants it to be paid, and it always goes into your fundraising money.
Yeah.
So.
And, and that was.
I am charging now, but I tell you, I have two churches that says, we've never paid.
And that was a thing originally for the years, to the best of my knowledge and from the understanding of what they have said over there. Um, because that was long before I got on that Dunkin' Booth started. And I know when I first got on with the department, it was, all scheduling was done by Sam and Rebecca. And then, and I don't remember, it's been a few years back, two or three years, Ms. Margaret took over doing all the scheduling and taking care of that. And I have verified with Beckett and Sam, because they're the ones I knew that were doing it to begin with, um, that, yeah, the only person, uh, only people that could get the Dunkin' Booth for free was another fire department. Because I know when I was on with Vernon, before I even got on with Warsaw, they did let us use, as long, and it was under the understanding, anything that went with that, any money, had to go to the department. It did not go anywhere else or we paid rent. Um, and I know Giebro's borrowed it without, and that's what it is. When it's another department, it was borrowed. It was rented if it was anyone other than an apartment. And.
Well, that's not how it had been done.
And, and probably some of those, uh, those, uh, practices was decided across the street and we didn't know about that either. Now, uh, anybody on this council owns churches to get special treatment. But we, we can't do that. We, I hope they don't pull my license. We, we can't, we can't do that. We, we have to do it. We've got some laws I don't like, but I have to obey them or, or not. Uh, so, so unless we vote to do that, this gets to be the problem. We would probably vote for every church in Warsaw to be able to use it. And here comes, here comes a church or they. And then here comes, here comes a church or a, letting gun suckers or whatever it might be, you got to let them have it too. And so, so, one, one policy, one policy has to, has to fit everybody out there. Now, that's where Mr. Carter comes back in and helps me out. I'll be, as usual, right there, I'll work, stick your phone up. Hey, bud, how are you tonight? Hey.
Sorry, my grandson, I, I have to walk him, his daddy's at work right now.
Mr. Carter, you have anything else with the chief?
I do not.
Which will take this, this part of it.
Well, if we decide that, churches are going to pay.
I, I don't think we decided that, that, that was the last discussion we were talking about, I don't.
Prove.
Well, I think you should, I mean, everybody else.
Honestly, the, the main, not to sound bad at, at all, churches are one of the biggest renters of the, of, of it. Um, there's a, that machine takes a beating, and that money's to help keep, maintain it, because, honestly, it does, it takes a beating, and it's kind of what it's designed to do, but it takes some repairs to keep it going, and that, if we were not to charge the churches, the other rentals might not be able to keep up with the maintenance on it. Which is why, my understanding.
Fifty dollars.
It's fifty dollars to rent it.
Nobody's bought after I told them that they had to pay, they just didn't wanna pay, 'cause they never had to pay, they said, but the vendor came up with all the fifty bucks.
Churches is just like when you're people, you don't want to wait for this and get a cheap one.
That shows the way it is.
But it's easy for the reservations to come through the town, because we've had RDS instances where two people wanted on the same day, and we have a huge calendar, we, we put the possum palace rental, the town hall rental, the Duncan booth rental, and we, we write the name, we write what they paid, when they paid, and so keeping it all in the calendar just keeps it all easy.
And we're fixing to have to pull it out of service for a short period of time, to do some clear coat on it or something, it is starting to look a little rough. Um, we're working on trying to get that set up. Um, there is a second Duncan booth out there, we're gonna see about getting that one going too. And see what it's gonna take to refurbish it.
Well, if they call the fire department, we'll have a call over here, we can check calendar.
Right.
And see.
The thing I like about having fundraisers and having money there, there's gonna be days, there're gonna be a year, when our budgets are maybe worse than they are now. And you're gonna need air packs, or you're gonna need goggles, or you're gonna need something, and we're not going to have that. But we're going to be authorized, able to authorize you to use money that you raised to buy some of those things. Over the years, it's been truck payments, it's been backpacks, it's been numbers of things.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody come over here and say, we bought it from the town, the problem with that is the town never did get paid back, we, we can't lend money, we bought it transferred it over to that booth or something like that. But when you have money for those things that you want, that you know we can't, uh, I don't know, thermal limit, something that the department needs or wants.
That's something we've been looking into, um, unfortunately, it's, it's expensive, and it's not quite in the budget yet, so.
Yep, yep.
When it is.
I think, I think I'm right in this, uh, we're not required to have a fire department, but if we have one, we are required to meet the guidelines of the.
Thermal limiters are not guideline, they're, um, recommendation, recommendations.
Administrative codes are not recommendations, administrative codes and statutes are.
Right, it's not in the statute stating, stating we must have thermal limiters.
No, no, I talk about that, I talk about what I'm getting for doing the thing.
Oh.
Taking the training, all those things.
Right.
Uh, so, so. Anything else, Mr. Carter, we'll, let's come back to boot, or do more, okay, this minute, okay?
Okay.
Anything, Mr. Carter, on the fire department? Okay, now, Ms. Carter's question was, do we need to vote on this about the church? Is our conversation, we just said everybody knew everything, and are we gonna allow lending between the departments?
I, I vote on this, because I'm separate.
Vote on them separately, yes, okay. All right, let's vote on the, let's vote on the church thing first, is there a motion, uh, that we treat the churches like we do any other renter, and that everybody pays the same rent?
Could we do this? I know for that one church do it, they all want to do it, couldn't we just limit it to the churches inside the limits of Walsall? Let, let them, let them have Duncan booth free. All, everybody else pay, can't do that.
I'm, I'm not comfortable there, Ms. Carter.
Uh.
And like he said, the churches are the biggest renters, for them to be able to make any money to do the maintenance on it, you don't have to charge the churches, they're the biggest renters.
They, 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 my, my guesstimate would be ninety percent of the renting is churches.
Because it's inside city and powers, but, uh, I, we need to, you, you're not comfortable?
I'm not comfortable, I just.
Okay.
I'm not. No, sir.
So you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, did, did you get the motion?
No.
We need to, uh, Mr. Walks, I made the motion that, uh, going forward, that churches and all entities, um, they can do a timeout, the only thing I can think of now is the development club who is quasi, can, can they use it?
They follow, there's essentially like a city agency, town agency, okay, is how I view that.
Okay, so they can use it, are we, are we good with that?
Yeah, well specify that in there, the development club can use it free.
Okay.
So let's get it straight.
The motion was then that, uh, that all renters, uh, being treated equally, they're paying the same rent, and that the Walsall community development club will be considered a part of the city, for this purpose, we did that years and years and years ago, to waive the rent down and fund, they said, fund they sent to the cities for us, is our thing, but it's, but it's.
It's a bigger drag.
It's so much of what we are, we waived permanently fees for the use of possum palace and things like that, so they don't, they don't have to pay their friends. Did you get it down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, do we need to restate the motion, everyone got a motion? Is there a, is there a second?
Our second.
We, we got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? You agree with that, bud?
Yes.
Sure, both she is.
Yeah.
This.
Yeah.
Okay, and the, the second motion was for the, uh, the second issue was for the, we could continue to, uh, lend the Duncan booth to other departments. My comment on that is that we are part of the Washington County Fire Fighters Association, and that we are all a part of a mutual aid agreement. And, and, unless, unless Mr. Carter says there's a, something he's uncomfortable with, or legal thing that would be, I would not mind to see, just like we had this corporate thing down here, we had some departments come together, and I, I would not mind to see us allow departments in, maybe we can keep that within the county, uh, if we can.
That has always been county only, Washington County fire departments only, do not.
How do you feel about, about that?
Because, a, as you said, we are all mutual aid to each other.
Yeah.
Um, we've been to several calls with Greenhead.
And somebody else that have a fundraiser, we lend them that as mutual aid to their entity, is that, is that a good application?
Almost no different than air packs, or anything else that you have, you can treat it as such.
So do we have a motion for that?
I might move it.
Do we have a motion that we do allow other fire departments to borrow?
In addition to gap.
May I, I was gonna say, um, any mutual aid fire department, which that, yeah, mutual aid fire department is Washington County only.
We don't have mutual aid with, uh, home stadium departments?
No, we do not, not us.
I'd rather.
The only one that.
My, my preference is that we should allow Washington.
County, Washington County.
You may have a future, uh, mutual aid.
Now.
We got a little over it, don't we?
Um, we do not have a written one. We have a understanding that if they need us, like during Hurricane Michael, all the way from even Vernon, we went and helped that county, we did not have, we do not have official mutual aid agreement, we have a respectful agreement, they needed our help, we helped them, it was a neighborly assist.
I like your, I like Mr. Carter's knowledge better, Washington County, uh, you know, next year.
They may change.
Guide your council, etc.
Okay.
We get a mutual aid agreement, two years from now, we'll use that, so we'll have a mutual aid.
Okay, I, I, I understand.
Says Washington County, the chances of the boundaries changing tomorrow.
Yeah, a lot smaller.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I made the motion.
You made the motion, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, don't somebody say, say, Mr. Carter.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? The chair votes yes. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Board, yes. That's right, bud.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything else, chief?
Hmm, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, Mr. Carter, I know you have experience before you came to be, uh, in, with, with Greenhead and, uh, too. Have we done anything tonight that you've seen done in other jurisdictions, or would you counsel us on anything that, uh, there's nothing that comes to mind that I want to say? Thank, thank you for staying in the bourbon, and you can say all of it if you like, but Chief, I know you have a great amount of time to leave, uh, if you're feeling, or if you have something else to tell us.
Um, not that I'm aware of right now.
Okay.
It's been a week.
If they have any money, this is how, or any, and if you need, if you need some of us to come and speak to your department, please call our attorney and, uh.
Give you the meaning.
I'll be glad to come on, yeah, if you need us to come and talk to your department, I would ask far as when we do come, whomever you ask to come, uh, Ms. Gobbins, Kurt, Ms. Carter's vice mayor, or even the council for that matter, I'll be as far as that you treat us for courtesy.
Do mine better, they better, um.
We don't want to come go stopping them.
Are they better, I'll be.
Thank you for coming. Are we good, good, quickly now with the rest of the agenda?
No, one, one last thing.
Okay.
Um, I don't, uh, nope, Ms. Lynn's got my number, and I believe you do, um, but any of the others, if you need my number, I'll get it to you, or she can get it to you, um, if you have any questions for me, anytime, call me.
Thank you.
I will do my best to answer anything I can, if I can't, don't know the answer, I'll find it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you. Do we have a card roster?
I can get them there.
Okay.
Two, thirty minutes, forty minutes, yeah, they're in there. Okay.
Churches, they are always.
May, may we need to suggest to a good new sector?
I think that's a good suggestion, I think that's. All right, Madam Kurt, if, uh, if we're good to go ahead, uh, please.
John, are you still on the phone?
Hi, I'm.
Is there anything you need to tell the council?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so, I'm sorry, I couldn't make it, uh, had some planning issues suspected. Uh, I do have a set of those plans for Jefferson and Jackson that I will be able to just later tomorrow.
Yes, we've, we're asking for an extension on the Jefferson and Jackson project, because it's set to end, there's no way we're gonna make the deadline, so we're submitting, um, a request for an extension. We need those plans.
And, and, boy, what's the cause of not being able to meet the deadlines?
John, I wonder what's causing us not to be able to meet the deadlines on Jackson and Jefferson?
Well, first, the first issue was just everybody's got to be able to get back to me in the right way, we're all now, and, and to D U T now request to submit six percent, eight, nine percent into D U T, and then just a longer process, and it's, I'm talking to D U T getting extended, no, but, but, but not an issue at all, we just didn't get it done for the deadline, takes, but they know, they need, they know, they just didn't submit, and it's not an issue.
And didn't you say you're not extending to June of twenty twenty-five?
I'm just sorry that, no, that one, just a week, unless D U T has an issue, which is that advertised, they need jobs, I would say the next, I mean, six weeks, maybe eight, unless they, unless they figure, for you, it's good, I think, and it's great, and it's our decision before the end of the year, sure.
I've got a question on John's. Question, John. Thank you for joining, Mr. John.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir, thank you.
And I put on here under, um, the well project change order, just want to let you know, y'all remember, I think it was last month, he came and talked about changing the, um, pump on the well, we do have to submit that to Florida Commerce, and they will have to approve that. And so what he's gonna do is he's gonna submit the plans, either or, and then when we get ready to bid it out, we'll see which one will meet the budget, to try to cut down on some time, because that's the project that they said after September of twenty twenty-five, there will be no more extensions. So every bit of that money, that's Hurricane Michael money, and it has to be spent, the project completed by September of next year. And, you know, we're September this year, and haven't even got a bid out yet, but, um, so he's gonna submit those plans, they have to be approved by Florida Commerce. If they don't approve, they'll send them back, so, um, he's gonna do it with either or.
I'll bet you that too.
Okay.
It, it, it sounds as if, you know, everywhere you're, you're kind of dragging a fee, and that's not the case on this, one, one of the ideas is Florida Commerce, well, you should have that four months, and then in our middle of the year, now it takes a year, year and a half, I mean, I'm still waiting on the carbon, on the, on Florida Commerce, on several other projects in other locations, and so that's, that's why this project, during that, I think, you know, I think uh, Walsall probably got their clearance one, this may probably two, well, three months ago, mid-June.
Right.
They've got full clearance maybe July, um, so, I, just say that they're not gonna extend it, they, they may not, but I've got, I've got a feeling that they are, because y'all want the only channels, the crosshairs that I'm on, um, that have convinced the right amount of to get where I'm, to get design. Um, I'm still working on that in several places, and so, or my colleague in other locations, so.
This is the well project.
As long as y'all are ahead of the board, it sounds like that y'all, me, or, you know, compared to a lot of the people that I know.
Yeah.
Um, you know, a lot of the parts of this valley, so just actually pretty reasonable, like, I would note that, you know, it's all, wasn't the case of anybody dragging a fee, or or they just want to commerce it forever, in this, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I was talking about the well project now, Jonathan, where, remember we had the, the site visit, and they said that there would be no more extensions after September of twenty twenty-five on that Hurricane Michael money?
I do too, and grace you, but I, I just, I mean, from talking to legislators and people, uh, this is the high deadline, this is the Florida Commerce is related, what the has set out, uh, I know, I know, that's the deadline, and, and, even, there's, there's a paper, they're not gonna extend it. But there's a hundred million, two hundred million, probably, it's about to stay, they already been bringing all their ad, and, and basically, say, hey, here's all this money, you're just gonna pay for it. Because we took a fee back, that's what's gonna happen, that's what I think, um, that, you know, that they're looking at it, but, uh, just there's, there's boatloads of projects that are, that are not real, or, or, if you're willing, um, Florida Commerce, and to me, it's not fair, you know, for those to sit there for twenty years and live for, and y'all don't have a word, and people spend it for you, so I think you're gonna be some things come out of that, that, that shit, you have to run a secure deadline of twenty twenty-five extended. Um, however, with these projects in Walsall, I don't, I don't think we're going to worry about it. Uh, our, our goal, what she's saying too, is, is that it's spoken out, I'm looking, I'm saying, I'm putting, I'm bidding package, I'm gonna stake out a submersible pump, as well as a vertical turbine, and get bids for both. And the submersible, which is what the city, you remember, what you guys wanted originally, if that's what they budget, that's what we'll do. And this vertical turbine comes in, it's currently inside now, that one, your place, the, the light July is cheaper, it wouldn't get you that, but, but, but the plan is that just have a kind of boat, that way, without taking, you got to the quarter, that we can keep both, see what you want, it's more difficult.
Okay.
Is that what you were talking about, that way you will, that submersible first?
Thanks for, Jonathan.
I'm, I'm staying, it's, I'm, I'm using, I'm pleased, that's why.
Now, we.
We're just, as opposed to changing you, what's, what's currently there now in the vertical turbine? And, uh, yeah, the town's, hey, you wanna go to submersible, well, to change it, vertical turbine, submersible is gonna be in, in the engineer's eyes, or my team's eyes, not a significant dollar, not a change, that's why we're gonna see if you fit it, y'all have last meeting, can't, can't, go back to this, it was a pound, or even that, you know, it was, here it is. And after talking with Ray, your problem is lit, we'll just get both, and bid on both, and see what the prices come back, we'll look at those prices. We'll look at those prices. That way, I'll eliminate the question.
Thank you, John, and, and when our engineer, which they can see us, we have our attorney here tonight, he can help, he can just, he can get back home.
He's calling you.
Thank you, John.
He don't have our rate.
Okay, moving on.
The next thing is the sick leave pay, I mentioned it at the last meeting, that Marcy had asked the town to reimburse her for her sick leave pay. Uh, the council asked me to reach out to Jeff and I did. His recommendation was to stick with the policy, whatever our policy is, although he can speak for himself since he's here. But I put under clerk to show you, she had sent me her last pay stub. And it was, um, basically a hundred and forty point four hours of sick leave, which would come to about two thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. And so I brought it back to the council to see if y'all wanted to reconsider it, she asked me to ask you to reconsider or to see what you want to do. The policy is not to pay the sick leave. We paid her her vacation and her comp time.
Then we need to stick to the policy then. Where, on, on this particular stub, where it says, uh, nine, we're talking about one time, they give us nine hours to settle that pay period? Or what is that? How do I leave that?
I paid her for it.
Well, where are you? One of these, for her sick leave, is that nine? And the hundred and forty is accumulated from, from where?
Yeah, you're right, it's wherever on the right, she told me one forty, wherever the right says available, it's one thirty one point two five, see where I go on that side?
Oh, that nine is gonna be huge, not, okay, so you take out from one forty to forty?
Right.
Okay, all right, I see it.
So it's one thirty one point two five is what she's wanting to, that's to pay out.
Okay, you're perfect, the question, what's the opinion of the council?
Probably ain't stick to policy though.
Mr. Park, you can either stick to a policy if it's written or if there's an existing practice that also authorizes the council to pay out on accrued leave. But if there's no practice and it's not in the policy, you're not required to pay it.
I'm sure it's not in the policy. I don't remember any practice in my service where we did sick leave, but that, the code I don't remember doesn't mean it didn't happen, but I don't remember any.
And by practice, I mean a regular, ongoing, customary, uh, course of behavior. If it's happened at some point in the distant or near past, maybe we don't, one time or maybe even two times over period and you wouldn't establish a practice. But you can vote to start doing it if the council desires and you put it in personal policy.
We probably had those policies in our hand now for a year or better, we haven't been done. Our, our, our charter, our policies and several things needs to be rewarded a bit of his money in our current policy.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Park, is that a motion or just an opinion?
I'm gonna say it's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, stick with the policy as it relates to sick leave, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
What did we do for Margaret when she retired?
Um, I spoke to her about it, she said the first time she left, she did pay herself sick leave. The second and third time she did not. Um, I asked her about other employees that had, had left and she said that they would never pay sick leave.
She did. We did pay her sick leave. We might not have paid her sick leave.
How many good was that, Lynn?
I don't know the first time, when she retired first time?
The first time, well. Which is then, the first time I think about it, probably ten years ago or something, probably.
Well, are, did we set a president's lien paying?
No, ma'am.
Even if it was ten years ago?
No, ma'am, that wouldn't fall into the quote unquote formal term of practice.
Oh.
I don't particularly like that that happened. And now it's another question, but again, ten years ago, that's well beyond any limitations period or latches period or anything from a legal perspective. So there's nothing to worry about there. Um, but again, it's inconsistent and I prefer that that hadn't happened or that it had happened all the time, if it were up to me.
Do you know if there's a statute of limitations on that?
Oh, yes, sir, ten years is, uh, too long. It's too long for anything, yes, sir.
And, and my memory needs to verify that if, if he, the council wants to. Uh, that was the time, if I remember, when we talked about that, uh, uh, Joanne Kane and with our clerk for a while, and she's been with the clerk's office now. I've been retired twelve years and she was with the clerk's office about that same time. So I know it's gonna be ten or two years ago that woman retired the first time.
Yes, sir.
We went through two or three clerks and then she came back. And then, I'm not, she said she retired her, I was thinking that second time was that she'd give us some kind of a retirement notice or something like that, but then she decided to extend it and say, oh, we reduced her hours or something, but.
I would say maybe circumstances changed and if we went back to the minutes of prior meetings, I imagine we haven't backed that far that maybe we find some basis in there. Circumstances changed, it was brought to the council, there was a vote, it was determined that she was able to do that the very first time and then it was brought back and determined that she couldn't subsequent times, I don't know, that sounds like a plausible explanation. But I don't know that for sure.
Okay.
Well, are we gonna be safe if we don't pay her? I mean, she can't come back sues or anything, can't you?
Well, anybody can sue anything for anything, whether their claim is viable or not, I would say this is not an actionable claim that she can make against the town.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Yeah, we need to be clear.
Yeah, I see you for being that. Any other discussion on the motion? We have a motion and a second that we abide by our current policy, how you would.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the chair votes she is, Mr. Carter.
Yes. Okay, and then only, only thing I had is that Mr., um, one of the, what's the name of the office, hand it on.
Uh, Wayne.
Wayne. Will Rogers, um, I spoke with him. Ms., um, Dottie Carroll had called and her grandson wants the cane grinder at the Rogers Square property that they had given to the city. Um, and so I checked with Mr. Rogers, who I guess has sort of been the overseer or whatever, the whole thing. He has no problem with it, he doesn't think anybody in the family has any problem with it. I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know if we needed to have a motion or whatever to release it from the property. And, um, so I brought it to the council. Do we need anything, Jeff?
Yes, ma'am, I'd make a motion, get a vote on it. I would ask.
He is Rogers.
I have.
That's why. He's trying. Dottie Carroll's.
I would ask about this, uh, some several months ago, uh, and I went to talk to Will and he's, at that time, he said that when they sold that, they, or gave it to us, they gave us everything over there. Of course, he's concerned they didn't have anything to do with it. And I don't like your reaction even because he was kind of spokesperson, but they have. My concern is, if I was the grandson, I would probably want to, uh, my concern is that at the time we talked to him about when we thought that it would add, uh, I think, I think, character, I think I used the word flavor a lot ago, but it would add character or it would add something to the site. The problem with, one of the problems with it also is that it's sitting on top of an oval well curb. I think it's a curb on top of the ground, I don't think it's an active well under, I remember the well was on the other side of the house, but, uh, uh, if it is then, in, in fact, and, and this is, once we go back on experience, if it is in fact a part of that, do we have to take some kind of, the bills or something for it? Because if we're disposing of a piece of the property or?
I don't think you do in that case, because I don't, I'm not aware that it has any actual value. Now, it may have value to some people, but, uh, you know, objective value out of the world, I think it is just a scar of a property.
Well, now, would it take away from that setting right there? Or would it make it? I like it that way, beyond, that's me now.
Yes, ma'am.
But I mean, it makes it look, well, I mean, it's just, I hate to see it leave, I'm gonna be honest with you. But, you know, it don't matter. It ain't nothing that I lose no sleep over, but I'm just saying, I, I'd like for it to stay there, so, that's me.
But did you say there was a well in the ground, under?
No, I, I thought they just sitting on top of the one jointed well curbs and on top of the ground.
Well, if y'all wanna keep it, you can, there was no reservation when it was granted to us. So absolutely, if maybe you wanna refurbish it, rehab it, it's a nice feature there.
It is, I mean, it's, it's mine, I mean, that's, that's just me now.
Mr. Carter?
I'm with John, I remember that thing being there since I've been patting my feet around also.
Long time.
And that's a long time, six years come October. He bought it with the property, it belongs to the wall, so I'd say leave it, that's just my personal opinion. I'm like, John, I ain't gonna lose my sleep. In twenty years from now, when he moves, they're not probably, you know, but, uh, I think it's it adds character. That's just my two shoes.
We have, yes, sir.
Just another mention, uh, just quickly look up one, from a value standpoint, I found one on the internet and it's going for fifteen hundred off, so if not, they're not zero value in a sense of it. Well, although I don't have an opinion on whether or not to keep it.
I think that might also depend on the condition it's in. Absolutely, with these things, I grew up in Louisiana, as y'all all know, and, uh, I get it. So it really depends on, is it operable, is it painted, or is it a rusty eyesore? It just kinda depends on the circumstances and what the council decides.
Yeah, refurbish it a little bit, take care of it, yeah.
But I agree, they're, they're nice, they're historic, they're, they're historical. They're, they're.
Thank you, I know it's Canada and Denver.
Yeah, I don't, I, I like to be there, but with the grandson shoes, I sure would like to have Ralph Paul's cane be.
Sure, yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
Oh, wait, what was the motion?
Did we not have a?
Did you, no, I don't want to.
What shall we do with, what shall we do with the cane be?
Now, I make a motion, we leave it as a detail, so, and, you know, and not, not change it, okay?
We have a motion that we retain the cane be. Is there a second to that motion?
No, second.
We have a motion and a second that we retain the cane be, any discussion on that motion?
What's the liability of someone getting a child coming up there to the, to that camp ground, getting hurt?
Probably the same thing's fallen off the slide, lowered and slammed or.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. If we do keep it, if, let's call for, well, no, if we do keep it, uh, we, we most likely would need to take the, the guide pole off of it, because it does come down, it could be a hazard of not just children, but older or even elderly walking into it, they're skinned against it, it's kind of an attractive difference or something.
Does it got like a, a big?
The long.
It's still hanging out there?
You, yes, sir, yes, sir, it's, it's on there.
Is it operable at all or is it frozen up? I assume it's frozen up, it tends to get that way.
I don't have an idea.
Can you put some dead wood or around it like?
Yeah, we can change, we can change, we can do a plaque, we can do a lot of things.
Put a, put a brightly, you know, like an orange, paint the end cap of it, you know, a couple inches back and on the end, something to draw attention to the fact that it's out there, if somebody walks around there dust or.
We could, we could mitigate any, any, anything like that if we can just.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion on the motion that we retain? Which one's that? Yeah, if I'd be. For.
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
I hope not, I hope the grandson means.
I'm gonna vote with you, I'm telling you, boy.
They're about to go load anymore.
Okay, uh, you know. Yeah, I heard you, it didn't reach you, but I heard. Read the huge show, everybody, everybody's gonna load you for me to kill. Anything else, Louie?
Hmm.
Anything else? Mr. Carter?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Carter?
I have just a few things. How is the new, um, pay your bill system designed to work? Basically, you go on, you go on and register and once you register, it will send you your bill automatically through email each month. Um, it's got a system on there where we can send text messages out just to our bill users. Um, it is, it does charge a fee, which we've had quite a bit of kickback from, but it's supposed to automate the system. So is that gonna do away with y'all mailing out actual border bills? We've had, we've had a lot of people that did not want to, we can only send it out electronically if you give us an email address. If it, if we don't have an email address, it would still gonna generate you a paper bill. Okay.
Yeah.
Does that charge for that? For us to get it through email instead of that paper?
No, no. The only charge, the only difference is that you use your credit card, it's a minimum two ninety, two dollars and ninety-five cent. The town has always, there's always been a charge, the town has always absorbed it. So we've always paid it. With this system, it, and it immediately charges it too.
Is it gonna be a charge, uh, on debit cards?
Yeah, that's, that's everywhere.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. My thing was, I had some people, three different owners said something to me about the email addresses and I was like, well, if, you know, they're going to the automated, how's that gonna work for the elderly people that might not be computer savvy? You know, that was my concern. They don't have to give us written mail address, we've had a bunch of people said, no, we don't do email, don't wanna deal with it. They'll still get their paper bill. So.
What is there a video check, is there a video that everyone's been checking in their information?
There is a thing where you can automatic draft now, yes, you don't make draft your bill.
And no charge for that?
Um, no.
No charge for that.
Put that in there.
But, uh, I choose.
Now, when it, when it pay, when you pay with your.
Checking account?
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't know about that, I mean, did you say?
It was due ninety-nine, Charles.
I had, I had once said that they, they first offered a charge, uh, made a charge of when he tried to use a check and that you came out and told him that it was not, it did not go on a check. Is, does it go on a check or?
It does go on a check. It also charges for a check, we can manually enter it into the system and you will not be charged for a check. If you try to go online, pay with a check, it's the two ninety-five fee. We found that out right at the beginning.
Don't have any, I don't think I have any problem with that, that are due with the credit card. I come down here, write the check and it cost me three dollars more to pay. So I might pay it a week.
We just enter, we just, or enter, entry manually and there's no charge.
What is it, just go in like the three dollars to the check you go right now?
Yeah, yeah. Down that, me, down that, in the line with three dollars.
If you write it and bring it to us, there's no charge. It's only if you go online and enter the check on there and try to pay it online.
Then there's charge for that, right?
Yes.
Uh, if you drop them checks off.
Right. And then my other question is about the past due border bills, what exactly are we doing? Is any of these people in touch and said they were setting up payment arrangements or? No, all of these, I bet I looked at it today, um, all of these people have been locked except, uh, the first one, uh, Troy's continuing to make his payments, EMS is always a little bit behind because they're paid by the county.
Uh, collection report.
Um, Mr. Paul Chester didn't know what his bill amount was, so he just put them out on there, but he's gonna make it up this time. And that's Earl also, he sent the wrong amount in. Um, Zachary Johnson and Jennifer are both locked. Zachary Johnson and Jennifer are both blocked right now. So what about?
So they're locked, okay.
The other one, the small amount, is because we don't keep cash here. And so if they come in and they don't have the right change, or they don't, we don't have change for them, sometimes the amount will roll over to the next month.
Okay. I'm just curious about it.
We, we call them and text them very often.
Are you to let, I'd like to talk on that.
Yes. I'm sorry. That's all right.
Does our system, I see that it says the notice of sin in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Is that, is that not a pay or?
I'm not sure. I'll have to check on that. I'm not sure how to get that all.
If they have something, set off notice sin in twenty twenty-two, and they still got a bill or still accumulating bill, then it should all since twenty-two.
Typically, they'll, we'll shut them all. We'll go around and shut about twelve off. Before we get back to the town hall, about five of them are paid. And then about the next day, we'll go around and we'll cut, we'll do about three more on. About the third day, they're all twelve, and they're paid, and they're back on.
That's the way to have them.
That's, that's happening about every month.
Anything else to share?
Nope.
Yeah. Lynn, did you meet with that guy, the water guy, who attacked you? Did you come by?
We were supposed to meet today, but he ran into some kind of problem. And so I'm gonna meet him Monday.
Okay.
You talking about Mr. Reg?
No. A guy came from the U.S. Water in Sunny Hills, and he has got a water operator that's gonna go around to several of the small cities and do the water operator for them. And so I'm hoping to meet with him to see, ballpark figure what he would charges the town, the kind of C. And so we were gonna sit down and look at our water permit, see what it required us to do, and give it ballpark figure, see if we not, we wanna.
That's good.
See if we wanna, you know, do an RFQ or RAP out there for it. So.
Any other questions?
No.
Uh, Carter?
No, I'm good.
Uh, I wanted to open the conversation, and then Mr. Carter's going to address it under the end there under, under his part. His foreman, at least his foreman, who was true. Philip was mayor. We talked about, and he has, and it never, it never happened about us having some rules of use, et cetera, up at the cemetery. We are, we, it's rare, it's more rare now, but we have had fumes up there, graves open, closed, et cetera. And we don't know if they got plot, we don't know if they are, we don't know if they want to push us, some things like that. Many cemeteries now, including municipal cemeteries, has, I know Chupicki does, and this has recently moved it, has a little sign out there that says, do not open and close a grave, throw it out, the city hall door, you know, some things like that. I think we need some rules down there about, you said, and maybe all of us together, could bring some ideas for that together. But I think more pressing issue is we don't have available grave spaces either. Our deed may need to be a little more, a little more than just us, the best we can't happen of something that kind of looks like we use the legal language. We may need to get a wanted deed kind of thing. I don't know if you do a wanted deed on cemetery law. But I'm wondering, Mr. Carter, could you address the cemetery deeds? At to the point where there's some deed restrictions? I know you said a house or some property or in a subdivision can have deed restrictions. Could we have someone go, like says, deed restrictions, da, 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 da? At the city's discretion, we can dispose of broken floor or statutory arrangements and stuff like that. When you got, when you got poinsettias down there in July.
Yes, sir.
And it's the same ones in our last July, because they used to be red and now it's white. We need to.
Yes, sir.
That takes, that takes away from the presence of the cemetery. When you got angels down there, and their heads and arms always scattered, and sometimes down in the edge of the road or some other statue there. We need to be able to, and with community service people or somebody like that, we need to be able to go in there and treat those graves with some kind of herbicide or something. We need tincture calls. We were not set up in the beginning as a perpetual care cemetery, and since the city has become the heirs of the cemetery, and that was probably thirty years ago. But since we've become the heirs of the cemetery, I think it's kind of incumbent upon us to keep it as presentable as we possibly can. I own property on two sides of it. I gave an addition of fifteen feet after I got on the council. We could keep the fence and dirt and all like that. That, that doesn't get done regularly. Part of that's been because our maintenance people who go and come in to turn it around like that. But can, what can we do with deeds? And are you familiar with the current deed form three?
I am. Let's see, one, which we're gonna have to redo, surely because your name's on it. And I didn't realize, I was looking at the substance of it, and I forgot looking at the top left-hand corner. Unless you got a law degree I'm not aware of, and bar card, you can't prepare a deed in the state of Florida.
So. That's what Margaret had it up there, and I took Margaret's name off.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So we're gonna have to take you off of it. No harm, no foul. We're treating it as a, as a draft. It's a draft and not a legal document for purposes of this conversation. Because that would tell you we did unlicensed practice law, which you haven't done because nobody signed it, and nothing's happened with it. So that's the good news. So I'm gonna redraft that, put my name on it. But it's a good draft, and I appreciate you seeing it. What we will do is treat it as a reservation deed, and essentially create a reserve easement in favor of the town to maintain the property. We will just leave it as maintenance and not include specific items. Just use the word maintenance so that that, we're not handcuffing you to what you copy later or somebody threw a flag about, you know, they put too much herbicide here and all up there, or whatever, what was my fuss about? But that's how, I would just take, take Lynn's name off of it and add some language in there, reserved easement to the town to maintain it.
Does the council feel like that it's time for us to do that? Certain, certain things on this whole thing about taking the name off. Do we want to reserve the right to maintain it a little more vigorously?
Are we gonna write up some rules as to how, like, taking away the poinsettias in July?
I think we all took, we did a sign. I think you said, no, do that in the deed. You said in the rules of use with a sign. And actually, then actually put it on like this one, somewhat to buy a lot, give them the deed, and then say, here's rules of use.
Is that right? Called rules, policies, having one of the policies as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, offenses sometimes. Do y'all think it's time for us to do that?
Yes.
I think it is.
If we do, would each of you maybe think about some, some rules, some policies that we could incorporate down there, things like that? I think it's really important that the clerk, the deputy clerk, the maintenance person, somebody knows when there's gonna be, and I know people traveling the weekend, but you put your phone number right out there on that gate, right out on the sign, something like that. There's no, there's no reason for that. My fear is that one day, some of those unmarked graves are fifty years old and older and unmarked, and people put it away one day. If we, if we don't know about that, we're gonna go up like a couple of graves, and we're knocking on a grave, and then, then we really have an embarrassment. And maybe even it'll also occur.
The other part of that, too, is we have families that have large plots. One of them has sixty-three lots. And there's no determination on who's gonna be buried where. And so a lot of times, we've marked it on our thing, but the funeral homes aren't calling. Next thing we know, there's somebody buried up there. And so, and other family members don't know that they're being buried there. And so it's just, we just have, the Carters have a lot up there. And so if they were, if the funeral homes would at least call us, because the families don't always, at least we could say, okay, well, there's somebody in the first ten. Somebody's already claimed the first ten. You need to be in eleven.
What you need to do, or way we do it at Markville Cemetery, is we notify the funeral home. And tell them, don't bury nobody down there till you come to this ballpark.
And I think that's where these rules will help me to be able to do that. I didn't want to call them on my own, but there, there's been several here lately.
I think the gap and person might do that. I think, I remember seeing, I would have version of it, T. Miller, I think is one of contacts. And I think.
Oh, we got a sign up there, Markville, with the names.
Yeah.
And friends over, no.
So at least.
You don't dare put somebody down there without contacting some of these people.
Is anything we said, you don't have any problem with?
Oh, no, sir. That's all fine.
If you, if you will, turn your, turn your thinking caps on, and let's, let's come back with some policies that we may say, maybe next one.
If I could add one thing here, too, on this deed, just so that y'all have to come to me or whoever's in this seat many years down the road, you can fill in blanks. And it's not the unlicensed practice law. There's no problem, and you can do that. So we can have a form deed with the legal description, with some open spaces for the individual plots, if that makes sense.
I think that was one of his questions. Yeah, all of ours were the same, as what was on the plaque map, and then it said Lot F, Row, whatever.
And you could even to go a step further, to take any avoidance of doubt out of, or to avoid any doubt, take that out, you could attach a copy of the plot and reference it as an exhibit of deed and mark it. And that's even more clear than just the legal description alone for folks. I mean, legal descriptions are hard to read, and to define it for a grave plot, it's even harder. It's not like, you know, square miles and acre and defining that.
Can, can you help us make that happen?
Absolutely.
The things that has to happen in the office with Lynn and Kim, and you can make, and then we'll bring back some policies and discuss it among ourselves and see.
I'll send a form deed back to Lynn, and I'll take care of that.
That's all I have. Anybody, anybody now needs to address, anybody in the, because we had it open earlier, but. Ma'am, did you, did you send the council for something? You're just sitting down for the entertainment?
She says she's Jeff's mom.
I'll tell you.
She's Jeff's mom.
That's your mother?
I wrote my mother.
She didn't, she didn't believe I worked with her. Well, we're so glad that you're here. It's very nice to meet you, and we come back anytime. He will run you.
It's an opportunity for us to spend a couple hours.
Well, sure. Absolutely. That, I think that's a great idea. We, sir. We certainly, we certainly thank the most of your son.
So September thirtieth will be the, the second budget hearing, the final budget hearing. September thirtieth is on a Monday.
And we have to, we have to adjourn and redo debate. We can't, we can't resist from that. And then we have to adjourn and advertise.
That's right, yes, sir. We have to advertise.
Okay, then, anything else for me to buy? Stand adjourn.
Thank you.